This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Luxler.
Here.
Ms. Holloway.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Connell.
Here.
And Mr. Kidd.
Here.
Sir, you have a forum and on the agenda, the first item would be to swear in and open office by Mr. Luxler, who is recently appointed to the board. Do you have a copy of that? Oh. Send this forward to you. Oh, okay. Yeah, all right. You could start at the beginning where it says, "I solemnly swear," and read that. Write to the end where it says, "So help me God."
The. No. Sorry, where did I do solemnly swear?
Yep, sir.
I just solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida, and that I duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform duties of supervisor for the island's community improvement district, of which I am now, for effect, entered, so help me God.
Congratulations. And if anything happened to that agenda, I will, you sign it, get the first signature, I'll fill out the rest as a goal, and then at the bottom, the acceptance, we can fill that out. The, that's kind of the business, I have the agendas, but it's the same agenda as what we had before we just highlighted, two items that were going to be discussed. And one was the proposal from Zeman on parcel thirteen, and the other was a discussion in general of the North Hotel parcel thirteen. I believe that the board, the board still wanted to get feedback from your residents. If anyone would like to speak at the beginning, and then we'll have the two developers in comments. Or if you like the way you can sort of leave, have in comments or ask questions after that. Would anyone like to speak in the finish of the presentation? Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Mark Vanen from Orchid Cove. And I, I do have a concern about the amount of traffic in CID looking at this project and want to make sure that all the decisions, the property, I feel needs to have something in it. I don't know if these two are the right fit for us, but however we look at it, I'm sure they need to take a look at the traffic. The members of Brooklyn or the community here in Brooklyn or Orchid Cove is going to be affected by it greater than anybody. Across the street, they're not going to listen up taking traffic, they're not going to notice anything. I want us to do our due diligence as intended. Make sure that we look at that and make sure that we stack all the dots and all the bases are covered. Think about all the people on this side. I'd like to listen to their presentation and then from there we make our comments. Thank you.
All right. No other comments at this time by John?
Cal, I just want to mention that, you know, we had a discussion, I'm going to be making some comments and asking some questions, but I want to do that after they've made their presentation.
Okay. We'll start then. Scott, you had the, you basically extended, he has made the changes that you requested, the, that was announced previously when we received it. We have a top, a red line version of the letter of intent at this time. Chris, if you could turn the screen over to Scott.
Yeah, Jeff. So, I can be forgotten.
I'm sorry, I only see Jeff here.
Yeah, it's Jeff, I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
That's okay.
All right, I'm going to make him a presenter.
All right, so I don't, you're my screen.
I think you will. Well, you just call it up like you normally would on your computer and we'll be able to see your screen.
He will have to hit the share screen button in the application.
Okay, is it up there?
Yeah, if anyone sees that, then that was not there.
It can't be. Chris, would you think that I slate just this screen?
The only thing he can do is to go up to where the view at the top and hide everyone. So there's a dropdown menu in the middle of the top of the screen, says view everyone, change it to hide.
Settings, view everyone.
It's just across the top of the screen in the middle. There's an arrow that says view everyone.
It's, so I need to do that, is that what you're saying?
No, he, he needs to do it. He's the one that's in control of the screen.
Okay, get that, that should get to your browser in your screen, then whatever you put on your screen.
Wait, Cal, is the rejection screens coming from your computer?
Yeah.
Then you, then you have to do it, I'm sorry. You have to go to your computer and hit, go to view everyone, dropdown menu, and go to hide everyone.
Okay, view everyone and then go to the dropdown menu of settings?
Middle of the screen.
Middle of the screen.
Oh.
Go to hide everyone.
All the way up.
Yeah, I got, I'm on view everyone now.
Change it to hide everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hide everyone, okay. Better?
Yeah.
Is that mine?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go, I know how to do that.
We can. So, I'm with Zeman, Jeff Vanen, I'm with Zeman Holmes, we're based out of Chicago. We've been around since nineteen eighty-three. Patrick Zeman right here is father and his grandfather founded the company, he works with us. Leslie Taylor, RV's our VP of Operations, she oversees all of our Florida operations. So, thanks for having us. We did put together a slide deck for everyone. We just felt it's easier to hear from us and show you what we do based upon our website. So what we're looking to do here is build a high-end luxury RV resort on those back parcels. We obviously know that shotgun is shooting range, but the shooting range don't buy someone else. So we've been looking at this, we think it'd be a great opportunity for everyone in this room. So I kind of wanted to just kind of give an overview of what we just did in Palmetto. We're also have a four hundred and eighty site project going on right across the street from Palmetto, as well as what we would expect to do here. A little bit of background on myself, I grew up in the industry, my grand father developed property too. My dad ran Sun Communities, which is the largest. So, it's a large, we're talking, this is about, uh, into manufacturing housing and then into the RV too as well. So, we really like the RV business, we actually like more right now than manufacturing housing business. I know there's a big echo there. Can everyone online here? I just want to make sure I don't have to go through, they can hear me?
Uh, yeah, they should be.
Okay. So yeah, we're, we're excited, we've been growing in Florida a lot over the last four to five years thanks to Leslie, and we think this would be a good fit, like I said. And I think it's easier to answer your questions, I know and understand that you guys are concerned about who's going to develop the traffic, right? We just met with Sony. Somebody's got to mute your phone.
I apologize, people keep dropping off and coming back on unmuted, and then I have to physically mute them to stop it.
That's okay, that's all right. Um, so we're trying to do our due diligence too, so this is going to be a long process, right? We just talked to zoning, this Collar County, we'd have to actually probably get a PUD for what we're trying to do, and that's a twelve to eighteen month process right now. And we don't have to do any wetland impact mitigation, which I don't think we would. So this is like a three-year commitment from us. So we're looking to make sure that you guys want this too as well and that the board, you know, it's a partnership that we're going to get into. Obviously, there's a lot of people that would be impacted, especially right up front with the traffic. But as you go through the presentation, we'll show you what we're expecting from our customers. Most of them stay down here six months and they have a car, and so it acts a little bit more like a hotel, I don't want to say hotel, but it acts like a long-term stay hotel rather than, hey, every night someone's checking in. So it's a little bit different than what sometimes people that have an RV or experienced RV in Florida deals with. So, the other thing too is it's great to have Leslie here, so she's able to answer a lot of the operational questions. So if you guys have questions about the amenities, the activities, how loud it might be, definitely will be, who's our customer, she's very well knowledgeable, she actually oversees all the operations. So she'll be a very good resource if you have any questions, and more than happy to answer and stay as long as you'd like us to. Or if you want to kick us out, please feel free to do that too. So let me just kind of give you an overview of the ties, which is something, and I apologize. So, we have three hundred. It's not showing now. I don't know what's going on, my, my screen's different than what's up there. So it's frozen.
It's coming out of this. Uh, yeah. Show was the same.
No, it's a difference, I, your show is different.
Can you hear that?
I got a share.
It still, it still says Jeff Vanen is presenting on my end.
Okay, my iPad is showing something completely different than what's on the screen, so I'm not sure. Like I said, I'm not technically savvy.
It looks like you left the meeting, it looks like that's what happened is you've, you've disconnected from the meeting. Or lost your connection.
Okay.
Maybe if you close down and try and connect back into the meeting. All right, you've arrived again.
Yeah, I'm going to keep walking through it, so you want to take off.
Essentially, the tie was an eighteen-month project. We broke ground in October of twenty eighteen, opened up January first of twenty twenty. It's a luxury RV resort, three hundred and eighty-nine sites. Each of those sites are oversized with clay brick pavers, lush landscape, a hundred amp service, all of those essentials and important things for the RVer today. We don't discriminate, we welcome all RVers, we have a lot of Class A, we have a lot of high-end toters as well that are traveling with fifth wheels and travel trailers. On average, we have people that their rigs are anywhere between about two hundred thousand and up to two million. So when we're looking at the caliber of person that we're aiming to, our market and demographic is fifty-five plus in our activities and amenities are built for such. We have a heavy activity calendar and event calendar, anywhere from laser shows to entertainment. We have bingo, we have wine tasting, we have whiskey tasting, we have flight tasting, we have magicians. The thought is that people can be as entertained as they want to be and involved in things, or they can be as relaxed as they want to be. The tie has an extent of amenity offering, there are two swimming pools that are heated, two spas, we have shuffleboard courts, we have cornhole, we have two fire pits that are lakeside, thirty-five acre lake that is fully stocked, we have a deluxe pier, exercise ground, we have complimentary kayaks that people can go out to McMullen Creek and take those kayaks to go fishing. We have laundry facilities, since everyone is basically in willing stock and may not have their own. Um, let's see, what else do I? Pickleball, oh pickleball, thank you very much, that's one of the most popular. So, two pickleball courts, and then we have a fifteen thousand square foot clubhouse. So it's two-story. The space we had to work with was a little compact, you may not always find two-story. We have terraces that overlook the lake and then also overlook the entrance. We are gated community, we also have a man gate out front, a lot of concierge services that we provide. And within that clubhouse, we have a caterer's kitchen, a ballroom, and then we have doors that kind of graciously open up to the terrace where we can entertain at most events. We have a multi-purpose room for craps, we have a business center with computers and printers for those people that are still working and work within their rigs and stuff. And then from there, we have a lounge, we have liquor lockers, which kind of sets us apart from our competition. So people can have a drink when they feel the need or when they're ready to. And then we also have a game room, which is equipped with indoor shuffleboard billiard room and also card tables. So all of that happens on ninety-five acres.
So I think what we're trying to do here is very similar to what we're doing at the Tides. There's a couple nuances, we haven't put together a full site map. Our goal would be to have three hundred sites, that's just something we need to hit for us to make it make financial sense. Anything below that, it's tough for us to make numbers, I'll be honest. You can't really build one and it's going to be a hundred and fifty sites because you have to build the amenities and you have to have a staff to run it, so you have to have at least three hundred, at least that's what we believe for us to do a project, so we think we can do that here. We mostly, I think, wouldn't do a two-story clubhouse, there's a lot more expenses with that. However, we think we can make what we're doing at the Tides. We went from a fifteen thousand square foot two-story clubhouse and a secondary clubhouse at the Tides to one massive, you know, long, I think it's sixteen thousand square foot clubhouse. So, that's what we'd be expecting, is probably a singular clubhouse, not two on this site. We'd also be expecting the same thing, patio pavers, bike pedestals, lush landscaping, and as well as amenities and the activities that Leslie described, which is pretty much what we see from our customer and our demographic. I'm sure there are a lot of people in here that have done the homework on us as a whole. We do own a lot of other properties. A lot of the times, we're buying existing properties and then trying to reposition them or put some money into them. I think there was concern from one of the board members when I talked a few weeks ago about our property up forty-one called The Waves, there's a lot more park models, a lot more permanent people. We're very open and willing to say no park models at this property. We don't have park models right now at the Tides. We have mostly Class A rigs and high-end class C rigs that really receive coming through the door. But again, we look at this as a partnership, it's got to make sense for not only everyone in this room and the board, but also for us. So I know the board's been very accommodating and willing to talk to us and we had some questions as it relates to our capacity of utilities, they answered that. We've done some homework ourselves with some lawyers on zoning as well as some engineers. We just came from a meeting actually today, talking about it and seeing kind of exactly what would happen if this was on Tides, so I can answer any of those questions. And that's where, you know, right now, it's a twelve to eighteen month process to get a PUD done. So I expect this to be a three-year process. The Tides took about eighteen to twenty-four months to develop, but about six months to actually get permits to start the development, so that was a thirty-month, call it, process. For this one, probably be more like thirty-six months. And that would be from when we started, you know, if the LOI was accepted, that would be from that point forward. So about three years, and it's about eighteen months of construction too. So I don't want anyone to understand, there is a lot of construction, there is noise with construction, I don't want to, I want to do the project, but I want to make sure everyone in the room understands kind of what happened with it. I mean, we do it fast, we don't do it in phases. We don't go, hey, phase one, let's fill it up and go to phase two. We come in and we develop the whole property, then we operate. So right now, the Tides, that was finished a year ago, there's minor tweaks going on and no big construction going on. There's still, obviously, when you're building that big of a property, you're going to have some of your warranty work things, so I'd have some people come out and fix them. But just from a timing, timing and just understanding, like, we were to come in here, it's about three years, two years of construction, a year to get grant you on and then get approved. Other than that, I mean, that's, that's what we're, we want to do. You know, more than happy to answer questions, Leslie can answer questions. I can give you more background on the company, but in reality, you know, this is what we see as the future, what we're starting to do more often. Our core business, where we've, where we've had it for the last thirty years, has really been more manufactured housing in the Midwest. So again, go to our website too, Zeman Holmes, but understand that's not what we're trying to build here. So if you go to any of our other properties, this is what we would be inclined to build here, this is what we'd be going through a PUD process for. You know, your forty-by-eighty, like, like class, high-end, luxury resort. Okay, yes, go ahead.
I, I don't really probably understand, people come and go, you have to come the whole season or is it in and out on a weekend or a big trip week or on top, I don't understand. Yeah, absolutely. It's all of the above. As you're building a business to give people the experience to hopefully stay with the sun a longer stay, they may come in transient, meaning a daily, a weekend, a weekly, monthly. But our business model as a whole is seasonal and longer term. So, meaning that you have a lot of Canadians, Northerners, or even people shuffling within Florida themselves. So we like the longer stays and seasonality during the peak of the season, but there's a lot of people that are floating around and may stay seasonally during off-season and stuff as well. So it's a year-round resort, but there may be more transient at the beginning until we can build a base, but the ultimate base is on a seasonal basis.
That's, yeah, go ahead.
Can you, do you keep traffic counseling in your properties, like at the Tides, you have traffic counseling in and out? You have a gate?
We have a gate, yes, we have a man gate, and we also have, like, people have spas or stuff on their cars to go. Which we wouldn't have at this property too.
Yeah, so, but you have, can you say, like, for instance, the average daily traffic, there's X number of vehicles per day?
I can.
In season, on a season?
I can get to that, I don't have that off the top of my head. I can tell you from what we've heard, you'd obviously have to go through a traffic impact analysis for us to get the zone. So that's one first and foremost thing we would ask to be done by our team. So we would hire, you know, an attorney, an engineer, then inside the engineer, we have to do environmental, we have to do species examination, we have to do the traffic impact analysis, we have to have TOBO done, we have to have a bunch of stuff that's done. So that's kind of, that's a huge commitment on our end because it's expensive to do. A lot of times, I've been in projects where we get through stage one, like, you know, you get through the environmental, that's good, the next day, the traffic impact analysis comes back, no, you're not going to be able to do that. We actually own a piece of property in Naples, off Manatee and Bridge Road, so like Manatee and Collar, basically. And we got a traffic impact analysis there, our zoning currently is mobile home communities, or mobile homes, and we decide we don't want to build that, we'd rather build an RV property with a traffic impact. We can right away, it could just be too much, so we can't build on that for an RV property. But I'll be more than happy to look at and see what we got. We have a company, a third party, that's used a lot in the Sarasota region, it might use most of Florida, called Envera, that does a lot of our monitoring of our dates, plus we have some staff there during off-season.
So if you could provide a step.
But one thing I will share is what we have found over the last year with the use. Although you do have people living and doing some of their day-to-day stuff with conveniences, there's a lot of factors offered, and there's not always everybody needing the resort because there's so much offered, the property as a whole, it's not the constant in and out volume that we had anticipated.
But your traffic now is sort of dying.
Yes, oh absolutely, and that's been fluctuating the seasonality.
Sure, yeah, so we could, and I have another, so, to the high-end part, I mean, you, you said you know that you need three hundred units back there.
We, that's, that's our underwriting, so I, you said we're in to make money, so yeah, we need three hundred.
So if you, if you can't get three hundred, then it's wasteful, because, you know, there's some questions about what property to build. Is the property, is it, is it essentially dead if you can't get?
If it's, if it's, it would be tough for me to get, yeah, anything less than that would be very tough. If it's two ninety-nine, yes, I mean, we'll make it work, but if it's two seventy, the numbers, our numbers start falling apart unless we sit around and say, wow, I can charge an extra tax. So we have a very simple business model when we looked at, and obviously, we're in this to make money, and it's just unfortunately, part of development is a lot of risk.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so three hundred is what we're looking to do, and so we had that meeting today, this afternoon, with an engineer, and basically said, we need to create it, and we know that the owner of the, he's mostly not going to sell, my guest, the owner of the gun club. So we're trying to figure out how that's going, and part of that parcel's zone that is conservation, and whether or not Collar's County would allow us to blend some of the zoning together, that would probably be one of the biggest things we need to determine early on, if we can, what we can fit.
So, basically, I want to make this clear, so if you, if this cannot be a high-end RV property, this is actually going to walk with.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to develop anything but that. There's, there's, I don't think that parcel is suited for manufactured housing. We're only developing a few parcels in the country on manufactured housing, and that wouldn't be wanted. It takes too long and too hard to build sometimes.
And I'm guessing, and you can confirm this, that your high-end parks are going to have higher buying prices and, oh.
Actually, you'd be surprised on what you buy on existing, it's probably the highest margin we have and returns, but this is something we'd see for the next, we're long for more, so that's why I started up. Ed's grandfather, so Patrick, there's our Patrick's grandfather and Ed's dad, started up this in nineteen eighty-three. He was a broker, someone walked away from a deal, he raised money, he bought an aged property, and it was a million dollars. We still own it today, that was forty years ago, basically. We don't like to sell things, we have, we have sold things that don't fit our model, but in reality, we like the old things, especially what we just built. That's something, you know, and we're naming rooms after my dogs. So it's something, you know, that we, we look at and we don't say, we're coming in, we're not private equity, we're not a corporation, I used to work for one of the larger corporations in this space. We're private, it's our, it's our money, we don't have outside investors. So if we look at a project, we have to really make sure it works, because it's not somebody else's money, and we're going to own it for the next thirty years. So we will do, we love this area, we've looked at this before, a few years ago, it was a different situation at, at a few years ago when we looked out here, but we continuously want it to be here. We think it's a great area for an RV property.
I have, I have a few more questions, I don't want to take up everyone's time.
Okay.
If you could explain to me, why you have gates in your property?
Why we have, why we have gates?
I think it was just like, I need to question that again.
Yeah, I think everyone, Leslie might have a different answer than even me. I know there's a perception of security always when you have a gate. I'm not going to sit there and say it's a hundred percent safe just because we have a gate, but there is a check-in process, right, with a rig, and we want to make sure we make that check-in process seamless and the person knows where they're going. So that's one of the big factors, is a welcome greeting right there, that's why we have a gate house when we design these. So we have someone sitting there during off-hours, if it's after-hours, we let them know, we leave usually a package for them so they know how to get to their site, and then the next morning when we come in, we'll go visit them, make sure they hooked up and everything's all right, that's our process. But that perception of a gate, from a security standpoint, we do like, whether it's a hundred percent safe, that's everyone's after all thinking of that.
Well, and there's value in the restricted access. A lot of people want to be looking, go in and take a look, which is all finding great clean bike people for tours, but we also want to host appointments, and we value the investment that our guests have on their sites with their rigs and additional items and stuff, and want to create new environments.
And I should say this, I mean, I, I, Leslie, Leslie, Leslie's a little bit more positive than me, I see the negatives in what we build. So we had, at the Tides, we had a thirty-five acre lake, right, on ninety-five acres. So there was very limited what we could do, unlike this parcel in the design aspect. We put our gates, we probably missed the mark a little bit on our gates, but we wanted to put the club, clubhouse right on the lake. So it was very limited, so if you do go visit the Tides, you know, you have a far return radius right now that we really like, so we learned from that experience a little bit. But it's easier to design something where it doesn't have a thirty-five acre lake that we're using for our water irrigation and you can't have the design around it. The other thing with the gate during construction, obviously, is, so like, right now, we have a lot of vendors, we have vendors. Just in case you've gone up there and the gate's been up there.
Well, I also, one last, one last question. You're, um, you know, Orchid Cove is, this is Orchid Cove, we're on the north side of the water, so all of the properties here are Orchid Cove. And obviously, the, the essential real fact here is that Orchid Cove, this is going to have a much bigger impact on the people than the public. So, you know, so, uh, you know, what, you know, traffic, we bought, people have bought, they've bought, you know, isolated, sort of natural. And also huge road, you know, traffic, the noise and other things. So what kind of things would you typically do in a situation like this to really raise those concerns?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if there's something specific we can do. Um, you know, if that, if that's going to be developed, there's going to be an impact on traffic no matter what. Um, we don't think our traffic, RV resort, we actually think it's better than multifamily, single family housing. Because your amount of trips per day are hugely greater if you take it out across. Now, in season, we're probably very similar because we're usually full. So January, February, March, we're usually touching the ninety, hundred percent, one parks on occupancy. In the off season, you can drop that down. People actually being there, they might have their rig there and flown back. Now are driving their rig back and they're leaving it down for storage on site. Uh, you know, you might see on site thirty percent, you know, on some of these communities. Uh, so in season, much less of a traffic, uh, issue. In season, yeah, we would have a little bit more like, uh, a single family housing. And I would say for traffic, uh, I don't know, Gordon opened up his opinion last time about how you limit the impact of it. But I think in reality, you just can't. Um, anything that's developed like that, there will be an impact, uh, so the amount of traffic is going to show.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be in charge of pointing out.
During the audience, it's like they're reporting the swing banner.
Did you hear me or?
What I'd like to know, you said, you showed us a slideshow, that's ninety-five acres.
Ninety-five.
How many sites do you have on that with this?
Three hundred maybe nine RVs.
There's three hundred, yeah, ninety-five acres.
Yeah, but the same amount, the, the problem, I just want to make sure that's how I was saying, we were limited in our design to get a thirty-five acre land. Um, so we have a hundred acres across the street and we were able to get up to five hundred if we wanted to, uh, on that, on that parcel.
Okay, that was.
So yeah, so it, it, that, that parcel was limited on our design aspect. Uh, and if you look at the south side of the Ties, if you go onto the Ties RV Resort, uh, that's dot com. That is, you can go look at all these pictures online and the south side of the property, you can see where we have a strip. You would normally have a bunch more RV space if you're only a bit tall, if it's a set max.
Right.
Yes.
As you mentioned, I said, project question, does it involve just the property behind hotel, the street, or is it any other parcel?
It's contingent on. It's not contingent at this point. Uh, we are trying to get it all on that one. But we would love to, Collier County, if my understanding, now owns a, uh, property where they're ripping down the hotel. We would love to be able to buy that too as well. We would love to be able to buy that. We'd love to own all of the parcels. That's our personal preference. We're not contingent upon it. Uh, that's something we were trying, we're trying to figure it out because when we looked at this a few years ago, we had it looked at for all three parcels.
Right now, you're looking at just the one.
Yes, just the one parcel. That's what our intent was to board. Uh, and it wasn't contingent upon us buying any other land. I got a little bit more understanding of who owns the gun club, uh, this afternoon, um, in one of the meetings. So I, I don't know if we'll be able to purchase that. I think, you know, I'm not, I just don't know.
Yeah, uh, whoever wants to ask a question, reader's down the mic on the phone here, should walk over to him. Uh, Audrey, you had a question, but excuse me, bird. Close house.
Talk right.
Okay.
An RV and captain, he was bird. I did a mini presentation. Remember, I did a mini presentation yesterday at a meeting. And I think a lot of people were very pleased what they saw. But sometimes when you see pictures, it's not real here. So like when you go real estate, I think, and look online, it's a wonderful place, it's like, go there and that would fit. This is what they showed. I think my pictures were better than their pictures. And, uh, and, you know, I'm an RV, so I am a pro RV person. And, uh, I, I like that you have a private RV park, but a perfect RV park. And that was a luxurious RV park, fifty-five and over. And what I liked about it is that like lower end parts either have, uh, gravel or bricks, these won't pay. And they have bushes between the RVs or the fifth wheel. And if you have those bushes, it really made it a setting for people. I guess what my question though to you is, you had a lot of amenities. And so you had, for, uh, fifty cents, it wasn't part of the, the.
Big clubhouse.
Big clubhouse. Now, if you need the three hundred spots, will you any reduce the amount of space between the RVs? Or will you reduce some of the amenities and what would that be?
Um, I think, you know, the first and foremost thing is, if we don't have the amenities, you don't have the lifestyle.
Yeah.
Um, so if you know product in RV or you need to have certain amenities to attract people with the reach we start. Uh, we are not, we are, we are not cheap. Uh, that's not what we're looking to do. You know, I don't think we're aggressively high either. Uh, when we looked at and started out on this, we did a lot of research that relates to what was needed. And we think there's a lack of newer RV communities that aren't pre-sitting home. And so that was kind of our business model, flights of quality. Because a lot of these, if you look back of RV properties and manufactured housing, we built in seventies. You didn't need fifty, you didn't need hundred amp services, which we provide now. Uh, so, you know, we think that there's an upgrade that's needed across the whole industry. Uh, as relates to where I would choose, I don't know. Uh, I would, when we mapped this out, we have certain things that we know we need to get. Is one pickleball enough for, enough for three hundred people, three hundred sites? Absolutely not. Right? So that's kind of where we go back and forth. Um, but I tend to say, in one enclosed building, like even at Surf, we will put a fitness center. Like we have checked fitness centers, pickleball, Google, spa. Uh, you need washers and dryers, you need certain amount, you know, bathhouses. So that's stuff that we know we have to do. But until I get into the actual design with the engineer and tweaking things, I couldn't tell you. Now, we've, we've actually expanded, um, at the next one, we expanded the amount of, I know we have those rows of bushes. We expand amounts of space between the two sites. Because we feel even bigger sites are better, you need more privacy. Um, here, I don't think we have the ability to expand it. I wouldn't shrink it though. Um, because we're already at a point. Now, at the Ties, if you look online, we have what I would call an observed, a lot of bricklayers, an observed amount of bricklayers. On site, what we might do, what we've done and looked at in the past, um, at existing ones, is create a car. So that, and the appearance looks a little bit more lush, but maybe the space isn't as big. When you pull in, you know, you see these, they come in and it's like a little bit of an alley, a little bit of landscaping up front. Because you don't use that front spot that often unless you have a really long, or some people do, and they have that car they need part. Uh, so we're, that would be probably where I first looked, we did run into an issue with the amount of sites.
Good question.
Yes.
This kind of dovetails to that. Um, and that is, you talked about onsite storage. Um, and, and what I'm hearing or understanding is, like, now you don't have a plan for the current footprint.
We don't, we don't have a plan for it. No, we do not have a bubble plan that we would go in front of the county at this point. Uh, and frankly, we, we can do that very quickly. Uh, that's, that's not what I'm concerned about as much. Uh, it's, it's more of, first and foremost, is the pricing after we leave this meeting and everyone talks about us? Is this what you guys want? Is this something acceptable and would the board be willing to accept it at that premise? Uh, once that's established, then we go and hit the ground running, uh, like right away. We think with what I, what we know and what we've done in other, you know, at the Ties, we're under contract, I want Nashville to develop actually up there. What we've seen and done, we think we can, uh, we can fit. Or I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be here, I gotta be honest. I would, I, I love talking to everyone, but if I didn't think we could actually get it done. I, I, you wouldn't have been coming down here and spending our time. And, uh, so we think we can get it done.
I live across, I live across the river from Sunside, I guess.
Yes.
I'm near the.
Yeah.
And I'm an RV.
Yep.
And I came, I'm in high end RV, and I hear a gun club in the middle of the sewer. I'm not coming there, and I'm telling them, no RVs, that this place is vacant, and the gun club office is not.
Yeah.
I'm doing the gun club, like, looking at. I'm not coming back. Honestly, you need to return, you have to take that from the, a week or two, and you want them to return.
Yeah.
And you want them to come for six months. That's what they're hearing, you know, it seems. And you had a talk at previous meeting, that you are looking for nice outside finance.
No, I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody today, uh, about finance. I, I've talked about, we typically would use construction financing, but that's what we typically do. Yeah, we typically use it, we don't need it, it's not contingent, I mean, for the price, yeah, the price is not contingent upon finding. It's, we typically get.
And I think that's something that we're concerned about, that's a community.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I'll just give you raw numbers. Uh, so at the Ties, we spent about thirty million dollars, we financed fifteen, so it's fifteen million of our equity. And until we hit thirty percent of our equity, so until we put five million or six million dollars basically into the ground. We weren't able to touch a construction draw. So typically what banks want to see nowadays is about sixty-five percent loan to construction cost. And you have to put thirty-five percent of equity in on the total project before you even think it's wrong. So we would be committing a ton of money upfront. It wouldn't be, oh, we're putting five percent into this project and walking away with bank financing and them coming in at home. Uh, we have not given our property back to a bank, uh, since we've been around since nineteen eighty-three. We have very strong financial. We don't go and do a ton of these at once. Like I said, we're doing one and then we finish it, we're doing the next one. This one would be slight into the next. We have another parcel in Soto County, it's public now, we put an application in. So if this one doesn't work, it would be that one. If this one went forward, it would be this one. We like this location better than Soto right now. Uh, I agree with you a hundred percent on the guns. Uh, we both came from equity lifestyle where we both oversaw Silver Dollar RV Resort and Manufactured Housing Resort up there in Odessa. We understand that there are RVers, that that would not be a problem, they'd almost look at that as an amenity if they could join the gun club. I don't have enough information on that gun club. The surgery plant does not look good. We would have to come up with some landscaping. It'd be very difficult at first, but I think over time it would grow in. I haven't been out here when the wind blows, so I don't know if it smells. If it does, that would be an issue. But these are the things we, we see too as well, uh, and we understand it, uh, and we're still willing to, to go for it, to be thinking of it.
Well, and I will say that there's a lot of established RV resorts and manufactured housing communities that do have challenges. Whether it be by an airport, by a railroad, and things of that nature. And so being forthcoming in our marketing and giving tours and not necessarily overlooking those things, but highlighting those things. So you set expectations, so you can li- limit disappointments on the object.
So I have a question regarding the road or the access, because it's something the gun club issue is something that air right now is to its feet. I don't live on this side, I live over there, but I do use the gun club on a regular basis and I enjoy that being here for. Um, the question is, is the road coming in here, average class A unit is what, thirty, forty thousand miles? Running up and down the shore, you've got bike, we're, we're, it's coming in and out. Who's going to maintain that? If I see ID issue, the access you moved into here, is that something that requires a bond to care for?
I don't think we've gotten that far in this.
There, there is a public road, the CID owns the road, off Union Road, all the way back to the gun club. So that's one of the obligations the CID realizes to upgrade the road and maintain it.
The CID's obligation to maintain it or may have had a bond that belongs to.
Well, that has been negotiated. If there's anything heated in the road, that's over and above what the CID would typically do, then we would go with the developer. But, uh, that's, that's all part of negotiation, but it is a public road and it would have to be maintained by the CID.
You have a private road.
CID, all CID roads are public.
Yeah.
I would like to know, do you look for any connectivity and would be a base in the county?
No, uh, maybe typically you don't pay school, that's about it.
Okay, we would be paying with CID.
Didn't hear any of that.
What was that?
Speak up.
Oh, we do not, we, we're not looking to pay any stolen back fees, that's probably the only thing we get asked when we go in. Uh, and I know we've had conversations that relates to the availability of the ERUs and when, you know, we haven't negotiated the payment, uh, of when that occurred. But we would hope that's the most counties would pay that as the development. So no, I'm referring to fact basis.
From a financial standpoint.
Yeah.
So we, it gets sold to you, you start what you have to do and then you find out. What guarantee do we have that you are not going to turn around and sell it to another organization that's going to give you your money back? Or maybe a little profit and then do something other than.
We have, we're, we're, all four, you guys want to put in and talk about this, um, we're, we're happy to put something into contract. The only thing, I think, when we do Zian Homes, that are, we, we enter in L L C's, it's more technical. We enter into Zian Homes, Zian Homes doesn't own anything. We're all individual LLCs, it's just waiver structure. So what happens is, we then form an entity, call it Port of the Islands RV Luxury Resort, whatever it is, buy Zian. And then that's by the actual asset. But we talked, that was a concern that came up when I had an application. And we're not having to put any legal language in there where we're not flipping something. It's not something we're looking to do, we're not land players, right? We don't want to come in and say, I'll buy it for X and flip it for Y. Uh, I'm not, I'm not smart enough to do that, but.
I understand, mortgage companies do it, land developers do it.
Do it all the time.
Development people do it, so I just, you know, from my standpoint, I just need to know that. To put it bluntly, what you're selling me is what we're going to get back there.
Yes, and I mean, that's what, that's what we want to do. We are not, uh, multi.
Yeah.
Right, we're not, if you really look at us, what are our priorities at the end? And continues to be to this day is buying existing assets and using our operational abilities. We've been in the industry for, I mean, you take a look at our top people in the company, you know, we have probably two hundred years of experience. Uh, so we know what we're doing, so we see opportunity. Unfortunately, that opportunity in the existing space has turned a little different. It's a lot of private equity groups, it's a high prices for manufactured housing, it's the hottest asset in the real estate sector right now. Uh, so we can't make our numbers work, so a few years ago, as we were looking to have a growth company. We liked the RV business and we thought this was a necessity, and the Ties frankly was a test basis for us. If the Ties didn't feel, I might not be here to want, like literally not this evening. Uh, but I wouldn't be in this room. Uh, so we feel that that's been a success, um, even with COVID and Canadian border being shut down. So about twenty percent of the Florida business, um, we're still at ninety percent occupancy right now in February. Um, so we just think it's the right thing. We definitely, something came up during diligence, we won't move forward, I'll be helping. Typically, the, the things that are a deal killer here would be, one, that, uh, there's an environmental issue. Two, we can't get the amount of sites. Or three, I would say, you know, someone comes up with a restriction that RVs aren't allowed to stay there for more than a certain amount of time. Meaning like, in the state of Florida, it's a hundred and eighty days, Charlotte County started moving to, the RV only stay there thirty days. So we, we passed on some Charlotte County deals because we're worried about their zoning ordinance and, and the requirement that you can't stay there more than thirty days. That would kill our business plan. As Leslie said, we want people to come down for four, five, six months, spend the season with us, come back again the next year. We get to know the customer. That's who we are. Um, so yeah, I, I appreciate the concern, I understand it.
So I think, has feasibility study been done back there?
We have not done feasibility.
Okay, so all of this is contingent upon a feasibility study?
We have.
Oh, all right, okay.
We have.
We're very early on in the form of the, where they're really. Not meant to.
They're still very excited for the next steps.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yeah.
My step is not for, it's for the board members and the people in the community that are making the decisions. Um, as one portion, my first question to you is, you know, what plans do you have to protect our community more? As we bring in more people, you're going to bring in more issues, you're going to bring in more problems, not just traffic. You're going to bring in more issues. You're going to bring in more problems, not just traffic. Um, but you know, it's kind of one of those things that you don't want attention, you don't want traffic. Okay, so it's just attract attention. So the question is, what plans do you have? People have to have on both sides, issues with transcasting, people wishing relax, pursue, blah, blah, blah. So how do we protect our community? What means you have to protect things that look like everything here is to be away from everybody else or when lived to operate from. Number one. Number two, um, what if I got a process? And number three, what is the benefit of bringing something? Because what am I, you know, do you have the best community forever? How good is? But how does all mean? You know, as it has a board here. Has that. That's my question to you. Why are we taking in? Bringing in gates? You know, what benefit is it? And again, especially, how do we not get the problem which has to have to.
To the board.
May I?
And I think. So.
Well, let us talk. Yeah. We have a one after question to come in. But as far as protection, why I brought up, uh.
Cal, can you hear me?
Hey, who is this David?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, he can hear you. Other people are talking.
Okay. That's why I just, when it's my turn, let me know.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, guys, you know, really the question is.
The attorney of the CID. Right.
Yes. You've got a piece of property here that you can use for public purposes. You could create a park. You, we could maybe even do things that would save us money on extending the, um, main borderline out from the well field to the community. Or you can sell this property to these folks and spread out the cost of operating your, your systems and facilities among more people. That's the question.
I understand.
He, he's trying to.
Bottom line, we answer.
Bottom line.
Yes.
Funny, she's talking about safety.
Well, like I said before, one time I brought up, uh, lighting over the bridge. Everyone, cameras pointed and all the period, everybody goes, awesome. Awesome.
Right. So he's a, that's, but we're out here because we like it, like out here. So we don't want anything more out here. That was, that was what she was saying.
I understand.
So, and she wants to know about the safety. I also want to know about the safety of these large RVs. How are we gonna negotiate getting off the canyon and getting on a very narrow forty five? One lane go in, one lane come in. How are we gonna be able to accelerate to even get on there on an upcoming Evergreen City? We gotta think about those people too. And how this is gonna affect them and all the neighbor in his town. It's not gonna just affect, it's gonna affect this whole area. And I find that it's very precarious. It's very slow. And if we were to try to catch them, we could be keeping them alive and they're all here. There are two things to be on forty five. That's my concern. That's my.
I, I, I'm just gonna say this. I thought this meeting was to be informative and to hear from you guys. This, I think, can take place with the board at another time. A lot of us are here to be informed about what you're planning. And then you guys deal with it and the people that have this and gonna work with them, then have that hub. But let's hear from them. They've taken their time to come here and talk to us. And.
I'm still. Oh, yes. I didn't mean for all of us.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, I've been out here now, living in here for over twenty-five years. I stayed at the RV park, uh, for two seasons while we were building over on the other side. And there was a lot of long cambers, forty foot or so coming in with the problem. Only thing I ask now, I've already seen the water plant get fixed again to bring more people. The only thing I'm asking is capacity of three hundred more RVs, is this gonna be enough for our water plant to hold? For our sewage department to hold? Another thing, we stayed out there for two summer winters and never smelled any, you know, it's been very clean out there and everything. I would say it's a very nice place. Only thing I want to know is the capacity of the sewage and the water plant.
Yes. We've got, we've got plenty of, uh, capacity in the utilities.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. Um, here at Port of the Islands, we're very different from anyplace else. How does our area compare to the area with the tides being so far away from shopping groceries, that kind of thing? How does the tides compare to that? Are they closer?
You're, you're bringing out that orange from stuff anymore. Like, I mean, we, we came, our priority took us like twelve minutes to get down here. So I, I, I really, I really don't think you're that far in remotest as you say today. You have a new publics going up right by the pillars. You're, you're gonna start seeing traffic come down this way, whether we develop here or not. The, the direction of development is heading south. Um, and so you will see that start happening. Um, as late as the forty-one, I mean, I agree, we've had, we've had to expand forty-one on deceleration lanes as well as the U-turn. Lane for, um, up in the Palmetto area for our next project, so I dot com. Um, so we want it to be safe too as well. Obviously, our last thing we want is our customers to not feel safe getting to the, to the property as well as the neighboring community. Um, so yeah, I, I think this area, like a lot of RVers, uh, they're okay with being a little bit further away from all the hustle and bustle. And I think it's a preference. Um, there are people that would say, no, that's too far away. There are people that says, that might be too close. Um, so I would be a little farther. Um, so I think it's just a preference. Um, we do leave, there's a lot of flight to quality. We think there's a lot of flight to Southern Florida, um, on both sides of the coast, including here, uh, especially with the snowbirds. Um, you know, off of Chicago, my twenty there now. I don't want to come down and have fifty degree weather. I'd rather come another hour or two and get that seventy. You know, so there is a big difference between going to Ocala and coming to Nails. Uh, so it's just not a Florida customer. It's someone that's coming further south and is okay with maybe being slightly remote and having to take a trip, um, up the road to, you know, the new publics or to get into, uh, Salina.
Can I expand upon that? So to answer your question over the tide of the Palmetto. So we are kind of nestled between forty-one and nineteen, but we're off two length sided roads. And so we do have luxury RVs and stuff being towed. Um, there hasn't been an issue. I can tell you when we started construction and developing relationships with the homeowners around us, there was a lot of concern. They didn't know what to expect. And in their mind, the level of impact is gonna be far greater than what it has been. Um, and everything, because it's not the in and out of a hotel or anything, although we say resort. It's long-term stays and things of that nature. Um, I will share that, um, I'm sorry, I just totally left my word. I do think one of the things that people need to consider here is that, I mean, you have one in the night. And so the traffic that you see may be inflated or amplified because there's only one in the night. There are benefits to that and there are drawbacks to that. So that's something.
You said that you were interested in all of our, in the county, so if you wanted that property, how much more are you gonna jump in?
The, the.
We, we, we can, say three hundred now, this is a question.
Yeah, I, I would say, we cap out, but we, we do cap out too. So there's a sweet spot for us, three to five hundred.
Three up to five hundred.
Well, that's, that's if we were able to, but if my, if we were able to, when, I don't know, after what I heard this, this afternoon, I don't think we're gonna have a chance to buy the gun club. This is my, and I found, it sounds like today from tonight, it's a, it's a nice event that people utilize around here. So, you know, that's, that's something, you know, I, I get and I understand that. Um, the motel front, like Mike and Shane, or the hotel is, is now of Callers County. I'm not sure what their plan is. I know our brokers went in discussion with them to try to figure out what we could buy that. That would be great for us, we think. Uh, but I can't, that's not what we're contingent upon, right? If we were able to, we would want to expand it, but we have to, we have to build, it's, it's hard because if I'm, if I'm, if I'm looking at that piece of land as part of the deal, then I'm building a bigger amenity center. And now if I don't get that, my numbers and my financial is impacted by building something bigger, I'm not able to add to our more site. So we're in this kind of predicament right now where we're trying to figure out, that's why I don't have a site bubble map for you. That's why I don't have a full slide deck. And we're trying to go through that feasibility, but we first want to make sure it's even feasible for the residents and the board and the pricing for that first parcel. But that would be, I would think there's a really good chance that's gonna be the only parcel. To be honest, I, I just don't, I don't know if we'll be able to get that one from Callie.
I have a question and a follow-up. Uh, how many acres do you need for the three hundred sites?
Um, I mean, it's all dependent upon when we get the swift mud and stuff, but I mean, with what we got, I think we got it.
The only eight acres from the CID, right?
Yeah, we believe we can get the three.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, including, you know, build out and get your, uh, switch my permits. But it's still, I get out there with a survey through an environmental, really look at it and put the design together. I can't, I can't hear it.
Have we approached the owners of the garden for a night or the block for eight?
I know what, sorry.
Have we approached the owners of the garden for a building or the block for eight?
I don't believe we have. I don't know if we have. Uh, I have to double check. I have a broker that works usually through Bruce. I would like him to be here tonight. Um, he's the one that kind of can tell people what to go do. Um, just because sometimes when I'll feed them and start talking to people, then they go, look, it's off, and the price goes up. And I can tell you, if we buy the, the parcel here, if we buy the parcel here, then the value of the other parcels become greater. They know what we're trying to do. We've tried to aggregate our parcels before and it doesn't work out well because as soon as they know where you eat your parcel, the price goes way up.
Well, that's another thing. The, the hotel in the water is cheap.
Yeah.
By law, you can't sell it to you outright. That's a walk for auction.
Right.
So.
And the dollar per gallon.
Yeah. So you know, you know, public orders and you're not pretty here for this whole, you cannot cheat.
I can.
Knocking all the rocks.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I'm saying. We're not, we're contingent upon it. Yeah.
All right. Jeff, you got a question from a board member here.
Actually, a comment. Um, folks, there's something you said up here that you need to think about. And it's the elephant in the room. Um, lady over in the corner, I don't know her name, asked the most brilliant question. She said, what about impact? And I think she's used that term before and I heard it and it got my ears and I looked it up. She is exactly right. When you were a kid, you got a Christmas present, a bunch of Christmas presents and they required batteries. And you said, oh my God, this is great. You open it up and there were no batteries. We have to provide batteries. That's called impact. So whatever auction we get from whoever we get it, that's not from Santa and it doesn't go in the bank necessarily. There are costs involved. We have to hook up to them. Keep that in mind. But the other part of it is this, this little piece of paradise is a district. We are self-contained. We have our own water plant, our own sewer plant. Of the seven districts locally that he manages, only one has its own water and sewer plant that's self-supported. Guess where that is? It's not cheap. What you need to think about is this, what price nature? If it were up to me, the reason I asked to have you here tonight is because I live the way it is. But sitting up here and knowing how hard you feel, the same for you. If you talk to those two gentlemen right over there and we pay, be the engineers, we just commissioned a twenty-five thousand dollar study last two weeks ago to get a priority list over the next five years of what our little piece of paradise requires to keep a flow. If I remember correctly, and they're from Old Montana, it's a huge company. It's approaching five million dollars. That we have to do. What does that mean in a nutshell? In a nutshell, that means we can keep it just the way it is today. We can put in victory gardens, bicycle paths. We can put in a, extra water, whatever we want to do. And our fees are gonna go up. How much? We don't know. It's gonna be offset a little bit by the water plant assessment, but it's like five, six hundred thousand. That's nothing. Nothing. This is stuff they're telling us has to be done. Somebody's gotta pay for it. Guess who that is? So if we have someone come in here, we have to look at impact. We have two groups here and we don't know what they're doing. These guys, the impact is not so bad so far. But all the questions you're asked are part of impact. The question Misty is it? The question Misty's asking needs to be answered. That's impact. Okay? So it's things we have to look at. We haven't gotten there far yet. We're here tonight because we want to see what you think. If you all say, Jesus, this is a great idea, okay? If you kind of say, well, we don't like this at all, whoa, okay, that's why you're here. But please keep this stuff in mind. Okay? Impact is part of what we have to pay to keep this baby running for the next five years. It's part of, there's no way we can do five million dollars worth of work on the infrastructure in our little city and not raise your fees. It's impossible. This, two million dollars blended with low interest loans and some creative financing on our part, would really keep that at bay. Okay? Just keep both of those things in mind.
Okay, yeah, I'm good on that. Uh, at the last meeting, I was at the last CID meeting and, uh, the board had asked you at that time to revise the letter of intent. And you had done that, but it had left out the verbiage, I think, that we were looking for. And I, I feel totally comfortable that you built, you know, the units that you say you have. But are you willing to put that in writing into the letter of intent that you're gonna give our CID board? So we know exactly what is, because you are, at the time that you made earlier, if you're in business, you have to.
Yeah.
Or board is not gonna be.
I, I'm sorry, on the yellow line, I thought I put everything there after, but I'm maybe confused though.
Yeah. So what you submitted, uh, everyone who was there, so.
Yeah, the only thing.
Yeah.
The only thing it doesn't say.
Okay, that, yeah, that's why I'm gonna clarify this. I'm sorry, I just.
The only thing it doesn't say, which was the first thing I asked for you, everything else is red. And if you make the changes, they're in red, they're highlighted. But nowhere on the yellow line, the new one, does it say specifically high-end or luxury RV resort.
Okay, I got it. Can you put that?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd just like to get this gentleman's comment here on what's.
Would somebody like to give me a definition of what that means?
I sort of looked up. It's Dan. Oh. Uh, Dan, were you trying to say something?
Yeah. What, what does high-end mean?
Well.
High-end means not a trailer park. It means expensive motorhome and a resort, not a campground or a park. This is big, you're.
Okay.
Okay. Uh. I, I, I'm, I'm willing to say this at this point, right? Like we go through our feasibility, we do our site map. I'm more than happy to have you guys sign off on the specs even, uh, this is what a high end is. You cannot define it. I think everyone in this room will come up with a different definition. So that's, that's. So that's, that might be why it's not inherent, because I think you started with motor coach. And we're not going to, we can't limit our business plan to Class D motor coaches only. We're just not going to do that, there are enough people with RVs, Class Ds, that are even higher end than Classic. And that'd be a deal breaker, I think I said on the phone call, of limiting it to motor coaches. But I'm more than happy to put some language in there if you need it, or when we go to a purchase agreement and say something in the L O I that says Siemens, um, will come back and give lessons from the board as it relates to this is high-end, because it has amenities, it has, the sites aren't, you know, 10, 40, 30 and electric, right? I I mean, we can be as detailed as you want, it's just I think everyone thinks a different opinion what high-end means, and I think that's what maybe you're trying to say.
Jimmy, uh, sorry, Jeff.
Yeah.
Um, what the L O I is, and and that's fine, what the L O I is, it just refers to over 55 RV. And as you know, now double Ys are considered RVs, hard models are considered RVs.
Yeah.
So the known culture is bad. Any way you want to put it, but what we like is you charge a lot of money. We, what we like is nothing at all, we like all of that. How, you tell me how you want to word it, but I would like it.
Yeah.
In the L O I, before we sign it.
Yeah, I will, I will give you some, and you guys, if you don't like it, send me what you think is appropriate, not more than. But we're, we just.
We go, yeah, yeah.
We could, we could, man.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Yes, um, this question is you, Jeff, and the CID board, how are the timeframes? We are here in this tonight, we're home, we're talking, one of our neighbors, on the CID courthouse, too, we're all looking at all the the auctions here, and what's in front of them. What are your timeframes that decisions have to be made, we have to move forward?
I think we extend our L O I to the end of the month, I think is is what we did. Um, we typically put another line down for two weeks, but obviously, this is a little bit different. Um, for us, as well as, you know, we typically buy from no, uh, single individual owners, so we're typically, so we gave time. If you guys need extension, uh, for another two weeks, and it leads into mid-March, I'm okay with that. We have our other projects starting, it's just, we would like to know, uh, sooner or later, so that we can get our RV ready, we can go hire attorneys, engineers, engage them, do some preliminary work, we know pretty much what the team might look like, and then get going on it, so that if something is wrong, like I can't fit in the 300, if there's an environmental issue, if something that comes up, that way I can say quickly, hey, this isn't gonna work, thanks for the opportunity, but we can't move forward. That way, you know, that's that's kind of how we look at things, is we like to get that server, that like, you're willing to work with you guys on the timetable that works for your board and for everyone in this.
What what does that timetable look like for the CID board, after the meeting, maybe the next fall is near? What what does it look like?
There is the next regular meeting, which is, uh, September 30th, the following Friday.
I expect.
Nineteen, it's not too late, that's all.
Um, I really, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Oh, sorry.
Age range, so I don't think you'd let me in the part of that there. But I'm okay with everything you're saying. What I'm really concerned about is my CD board, are you guys gonna take care of Orchid Co? Are you gonna treat us like a redheaded stepchild, like he's done the whole time? So if things are gonna go, then I'm okay with that, but I just want the CID to know that they need to really be on board with this and make sure that they're right along with you.
Wait, wait, wait.
Because.
Wait, wait, wait.
Appreciate it. And so.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
I think what we have to be focused on is the purpose of this meeting. What do you guys want to do with that property? Do you want to sell it? You know, which would be a great benefit to the, to the community? We get enough money to, you know, get the, uh, new water line in from the well field? Do you want it to be developed? Do you want it to be a community asset?
Well, okay.
And then you would have to deal with that being, you know, a liability for you in the future, getting the water line run. This is a business decision that you're going to have to reach. Do you want to sell the property? I mean, the plan that these guys have presented is fantastic. But do you, as a community, want to sell that property?
We're trying to figure out. So, man, answer your question.
So you keep asking them questions about what they're going to do. You know, but you haven't even focused on what are the assets of you keeping that in your pocket?
All right. Answer your question, man.
Yeah.
Uh, the best thing to tell you is this, I don't know if you go to the CID meetings, new faces. Things have changed, consider, this would have never happened two years ago. Now it's happened. We originally, we wouldn't care what you thought, not us, that would very much care what you think. So it's a good question, and Orchid Co. is really directly impacted by it. We just have to find out, so far, these folks have been straight up. We have to find out, they want to be good neighbors, and if they do, we can all sit by the campfire and sing Kumbaya, or not. So, but it's a good question, but it is a whole new board.
But I guess I would say, nothing's gonna be decided tonight.
That's right.
The reason that we came is to gather information, not as important decisions, we get a step.
That's correct.
Important decisions will get us really long covered.
That's right.
That's my trust in it. We also have another person presenting other information.
Right.
I think we need to gather any information, right now, we don't have to make decisions. Does anybody else want to try? Oh, I'm gonna get a.
Okay. My understanding is a lot of your developments are out in the middle of nowhere, where you're not right up against the community. Uh, being being right up against, well, I I guess if you don't get the old hotel property, you wouldn't be right up against us. But if you were to order the Orchid Co., do you put massive landscaping between your sections and ours?
Landscaping buffers, fencing, uh, again, I I. Please, if you go out on a fresh page on the falls, that's what we're expecting, that has a fence, a community as well as a hedge, uh, that we put in, do as well, that won't grow up over time, actually, pass some of these fences. So that's our our plan, we 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 kind of watch what, that is supposed to look for our guests.
That that will all be governed by the land development code, and it does require buffering.
Yeah, okay, I'm sure right there, Callie.
Yeah, I just want to say, kind of, on the fact that that high-end community comes in, it's not like they're just taking from us. They're gonna be contributing to the community also. Okay, and then, you know, you just can't say that they're gonna be contributing probably in excess of $50,000 a year to the CID to help paper the road, help paper this, to help paper when the number is yet to be replaced in the water treatment. Things aren't free, unfortunately, it's just, you know, things wear out, we gotta fix it. And when you work out, hopefully, we'll work out a scenario that works for you, unless, you know, unless there's overwhelming, uh, sentiment against it, which we proud to decide, decide with the authority, and then be.
Yeah.
It should be discovered right now, keep changing.
Please don't talk, please don't.
But, yeah, if something, they're just taking from, taking, okay? It's not that continual, you know, give and take, no matter what. Um, just go on and go through them, I want that to be open.
Okay, uh, were you, you got any other people?
Just a follow up, I was asked, because I have a spot. Correct, that's a nice, uh, same area.
Can you use a low carryable?
No. So for the, uh, the landings that you have, which most people agree have seen it, it's beautiful, that's something. I would like to see it, in fact, that comes through. One of the concerns I had, that we had discussed by site, was basically, we were under a beam for the statement, it's not reaching, right? At the landings, you have downlying, five hours, access roads, the entrance, is it wide, 12 carts, is this supposed to be 12 carts, watching that, is that something you have up there? So is that something we wish you doing down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just to let you know, when we set out to do the ties and we had preliminary conversations, we, I actually created a focus group, and there was 14 different couples that were part of that group, who had been arming full-time for five to 10 years. Because they're the end user, and they're the experience, and everything else, it allowed us to gather information from the identity standpoint, and the system of the property, but they were important to them, uh, that we is offering, although maybe, no, we're not actually using. So yes, we look at bypass, we look at walking paths, we look at the orientation of feet, um, look at rigs coming in, and the radius and planting sites, what's easy to get in and out of, looking at lighting to give adequate lighting for safety and people who are walking.
Right.
But not giving a huge lighting footprint where it goes into rigs and is intrusive or anything like that. So we try to be mindful and really think through all of the details that go into that.
And we do have five hours.
We do have five hours, so we have, what are resort guidelines? So you have five hours, you have code of conduct, you have use, what we expect. In the COVID situation, we do expect clear maps in all of our structures, like that reinforced AC guidelines. Although we're doing activities, we're doing it differently, we have also occupancy limitations. So we're very mindful of creating that best guest experience, but doing it in. And then I will say, we are highly reactive, so there are times where we have situations where people may not follow those guidelines, and we're very quite compatible. So if that's asking someone to make a danger in doing a state, because we, I think, clients, we run our business, we're on by entrance, we have a full staff, we're meeting reservations, uh, and manager on site. So we don't try to be too intrusive and rule people by, but we try to create a harmonious environment for everyone to enjoy.
Last chance.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, is there, that's a, is there, if we lost everyone, we felt the, no, that was, no. We lost everyone, uh, and why?
Thank you. I'm glad you went.
Take a sentence, love. Oh, it's hard to run it.
Yeah, we've been the last.
All right, uh, Josh, are you ready?
Absolutely.
Yes, we're finally.
Everyone who's connected online, we're, I'm trying to get Cal to reconnect.
Across the street over here, and until recently, we didn't, you know, for us, you know, as long as the hotel was there, it didn't make sense to really even take a serious look at it, because it was such an eyesore, as the entrance to this property, that we just kind of bided our time, waiting to see what happened. And sure enough, the county took control over it, now it's coming down. So our interest level grew, and until recently, we didn't even know the association was a, or the board was soliciting offers for the property, and we heard of another offer, L O I that came in, so, so we're kind of accelerating our expression of interest in the property, not to the point where we have an L O I or a site plan, but we've been studying it carefully for the last few months to kind of figure out what's the highest and best use for the property. So rather than being too presumptuous, you know, when we heard about tonight's meeting, we wanted to come and listen to what the opinions of the people who would be most affected by what gets developed back there, so we could take that, process it, you know, see if we are interested in, you know, introducing some of the product types that we have developed over the years into that. Um, we are not a, an RV park, we're not a transient developer, most, everything we've ever developed is is year-round. Um, most of our properties have been waterfront, we love the property for a lot of reasons, the water, of course, we're on water across the street. Um, and so the intent tonight was more of an expression of interest, to be able to answer questions about who we are, what our capabilities are. But realistically, we need more time to study what could be done there, and understanding land valuations as well. I don't know that traisels or things like that have been done, or formal solicitations or RFPs, but that's what we're used to seeing when there's public property being made available. So we're out playing catch-up a little bit. Um, since we purchased the marina, we also purchased two acres of commercial property across the street. And we're talking to some people right now, doing a feasibility study again, to see what would be the highest and best use, and listening to the community, because whatever we do develop up there is really for the benefit of the community as a whole. So a-again, I don't, I don't have a, a presentation, I didn't bring our, our development team down from Ohio with us, because we're, we're so new to catching, playing catch-up with respect to where it appears the project is. But at a minimum, uh, when we were at the last board meeting and heard of the opportunity to be able to present ourselves, that's really why I'm here. As I mentioned, our signature project at marbleheadestates.com, you can get a good idea of what we do. It's an 85-acre marina, uh, I'm sorry, it's an 85-acre development, private gated, on a beach, we've got a 15-acre marina in the center of it, we're building condominiums, et cetera, et cetera, but the website's kind of self-explanatory. Um, but I have been here for six and a half years, we plan on being here for a lot more years, we're embedded. I'm down here every month, so I, I'm a snowbird to some degree, Ohio, Florida, that's where I'd rather be during this time of year. And, uh, so with our acquisition of the commercial, we're, we're even looking beyond that. We, uh, it's not a secret that the group across the street, the Sunstream group, has been trying to sell that resort hotel for some time. Uh, we're interested in that, we have an offer on the table for it. And our objective with that property, we think it's a little tired and could be brought up to a new level, to magnify, you know, where we think this community is headed and and should be headed. And so we're willing to make that investment as well, plenty of amenities over there, the share and the, you know, create common, uh, you know, interest between what happens over here and what happens on the other side of the road, because we are part of the same community. Long-term, probably end up moving down here, but certainly, most of our development activity is focused down in this area. We're also in Orlando, doing a single-family subdivision as well, it's just where I'll land now in the entitlement process. So, um, you know, I I really want to come and and get a little more comfortable with the community. We're on the other side of the road, so I don't network all that much with with the Orchid Co. people, other than having attended a few of the meetings. But we are here to stay, we're long-term, and we can do a lot. But we are here to stay, we're long-term, and we can do a lot of different things with that property, but it's just too early on for us to be at the point where we're here to say, this is exactly what we would do here.
How long would it take you to help?
Well, we, so, you know, probably in the 30 to 60-day range, to be honest with you. I mean, it just, I don't want to rush into something just to try and appease somebody without thoroughly thinking through what we think would be the highest and best use for it, and that just takes time.
We're arguing. I mean, what would you see?
No, we are not a mobile home park, we're not a manufactured home park, you know, we've developed, we, we, you know, high-end condominiums and single-family homes, that's been what we've, what we've done. And a lot of times, we do mixed use, we wouldn't necessarily do all 50 acres of single-family, we probably have some, you know, some, some multifamily components related to that. If you, if you take a look at Marblehead, I'd like to bring a, you know, a little bit of, of what we're doing up there down to this property as well.
What would you be doing at the hotel apart from the water?
So I think we've invested in, in, you know, to me, it's a little bit tired. You know, we'd be interested in investing in the infrastructure, the structure itself, the amenities, and take it from here up to here.
More about the park?
Well, there's, okay, so parking's been an issue for a lot of years. You know, there, there, I can tell you this after spending many, many hours with the county, with Rick, with Ash, or lots of people, the Sunstream Groups, there is enough parking over there, there's a parking convenience problem. Everybody wants to cluster around where their units are, where the Marina is, instead of parking across the street, but there's plenty of parking there. You know, there's only so much land to go around for parking, there's some additional parking that's planned in and around the hotel area as we speak, but there's, there's never been a problem with not having enough, it's just a convenience issue. So the county owns a certain amount of the parking, Sunstream owns all the rest of it, we just own the Marina. So we don't have any input of what happens with the parking or not with the parking. Certainly, we want to change and make things better, that's the only reason why we'd be interested in developing there, we've done that with the Marina. We bought the Marina, it was 30% full six years ago, we're 100% full with the waiting list, and look at the quality of boats that are in there now.
Well, we're in it 20 years.
Yeah, so you know, you know, I'm, I'm new to the, I'm six years new to the area, 2015.
There is a problem, there is an issue of that.
We don't have any control over it because we don't own any parking. But, go ahead.
I think I understood the first part. You bought the Marina, the hotel is for sale.
The hotel's been for sale for many years, many years.
That, that hotel is also approved for a few condominium towers, correct?
There's, no, there, there's, there's three parcels of property around the hotel, and they have approval to build a five-story building, a seven-story building, and a 10-story building, condominiums. Site plan's already put, we're not interested in those three, we don't think that's an ideal fit for that particular area, we think it's too congested based on parking and all those other things we talked about. Our interest is not in that land, and we have no plans to express that interest either, it's just the hotel itself.
I just have a comment, I heard a question back there about how long it's going to take you to get that. We notified you six months ago that it was for sale, or longer?
Well, normally, we see an RFP that outlines parameters and timeframes and things like that, so that's what we're used to seeing. I'm not saying it is or isn't right, I'm just saying that publicly owned land, we typically thought there's a process flow that has to happen.
We set that to you, Sam.
But I have a question. Your facility up in Ohio.
Yes.
Like 85 acres, you said.
Yes.
How many units sit on that property?
About 250. When it's all fully developed, we'll have about 250. Now that, yes.
And are the units homes or condos?
They're homes, they're year-round living, condominiums, homes, snowbirds, things such as that, it's not a transient park.
So you're still going to have second track?
We would have a less dense property on 50 acres. 250 on 85 acres, do the math. Typically, on, yeah, and the condos, we, you know, we have three-story high condos, that's as high as we go close. So we, yeah, it's less dense, less density, year-round living, less transient.
Comparatively, you'd also have, correct me if I'm wrong, a full ERC sold to each unit as opposed to 40% of what ERC in the RFP. Is that correct? The RVs are like a hotel room unit?
Well, it depends, it depends on what he's proposing. Well, he's proposing to build condominiums that are similar to, like Orchid Cove or some of the others.
They make one ERC.
It's 80% of ERC.
The RVs would be 40%.
Depends on what he's proposing. But not proposing RFP, it's not 40%, it's more like 80%.
No, I think comparatively to the other one. And the dormitory, when they were going to develop that, what we told them is that it was 0.8, and they didn't have enough ERCs. And that was 0.8 based on 400 square foot units.
No, they were, they were going to do units that were the size of the, like condos, which are 0.6.
Yeah, that makes sense, 400 square feet.
Okay, but in all this, you still haven't even given us an estimate of what you thought it was worth. I haven't heard $1 on it, so.
So, again, typically, we would, in previous projects, if we're buying from public land, they would have been, got appraisals ahead of time and how long those were at or.
You've got, you've got.
I, I'm not afraid of that number, if that's what you're asking me, I'm not prepared to make a formal offer right now, but I'm not afraid of the $2 million offer.
I'm asking for an estimate.
I haven't done an appraisal, I'm not a licensed appraiser in Florida, I'm just giving you from a, from a land standpoint, if that's the number that's being discussed, we're not afraid of that number.
Scott, you said you're interested in the hotel? Is that or your contingent?
No, no, because.
I know, I'll go with the other one, but you're interested in that?
Yes.
I say you don't get that, are you still interested in that? But I'm saying.
Yes, yes, it's not condition upon that.
Whether you get that or not.
No, it's not condition upon that.
Okay.
No other questions? Are there any questions from the audience or either of the speakers, the audience that's online? There's probably 20 people that have been online, waiting patiently. Uh, you have to unmute your mic. Okay, not having, hearing anyone, Ward, it's back to you.
I have a question. A gentleman back there said, I don't know the answer to it, and I don't know, the, the old hotel, uh, the county took it over by, by foreclosing from the park, Union Road Park. They went to the courthouse there with it, there were no bids. They went into plans for sale for three years, waited redemption. January 9th last year, it came out, and it is sheeted over to the county tax collector, and it's free of charge to her, to him, free of charge. Now, uh, the demolition is, let's say 400,000, so now they're back in the game for 400,000, skin in the game. He said, and he may be right, I don't know the answer, and I'm curious, he thinks that, again, they can't just sell it, it would have to go to an auction.
It's all they have to offer.
I'm not sure that's the way it is, because it's already gone through the process, that's the only reason why, but I'm curious.
Yeah, county owns it.
Yeah.
And I believe the county has every right.
To sell it. And I think Dan might still be off the line, do you want to address that, Dan?
Yes, once the property is leased to the county, they can offer it to a local government like you, and otherwise, they publish it for sale.
But they can sell it?
Yes.
So then it can't be sold or retailed, they don't have the auction, it's like second time. Good question, though, I didn't know the answer either.
I have one last question. I've got one last question for the board. As you can see, two weeks ago or whenever, at the last CID meeting, this was requested as a referendum on what's going to happen to that property. And I think you're seeing that there's a lot of interest and a lot of input and a lot of vocal input on this. Are you going to have a website, are you going to have an email access that where we can put in additional, if we're going to go home, if we're going to talk to our friends, people that weren't here, and I'm sure they're going to all want to have some input in this as well.
On the website is, you can contact any one of us or the management pal with those questions.
Sure.
I direct them all there, that we can discuss another thing.
Then they'll come up with a deal.
And the.
The management pal, and they'll bring them to our meeting.
Sure. Yeah, and there, the board did, two years ago, maybe, they went out for proposals, out for bids. We had several firms come through, but the timing wasn't right, they backed off, and if anyone wants to see that proposal, it is on the website, if you go into, I think it's information, in the drop-down menu, you'll see that there, so if anyone has an interest in it.
A little bit of history that I know of is that the old hotel did not help us in selling that property.
It wasn't determined.
And we took over the property because it was, we don't want to be in the land business, but took it over because financially, it was the best thing we could do. As that property lays dormant, we are losing a lot of money every year on assessments, because we own it, so we're not collecting that. And our assessments went up a few years ago, and it was my hope to work on lowering our assessment. As long as we keep that property, the assessments are going to stay up.
Yeah, I think we were looking through that earlier, the last payment, to my understanding, for the water treatment plan, is what this meant.
But that was the debt service, but you still have capital improvements that haven't been done in the past five or 10 years.
That's the debt service, and then the money that engineers are doing now is like almost $5 million bucks, it doesn't start there, it's like you're thinking, this is like a little city, and it's always something.
So, so the money that we're getting right now will continue if we didn't do anything to do?
Continue or get worse.
Or get worse.
Wouldn't it make sense to, once these developments, scenarios are brought to fruition on paper, to decide or to look at how much each type of development would bring in money-wise to the CID, which is going to give the most benefit financially to help, you know, fill the coffers here? I would think that would make more sense, to look at each one individually as they're brought up and see which one has the most value financially to the community.
Okay. I think we're done with questions from the audience. Ward, what would you like to do?
Hi.
Just wait, give Zim in an opportunity to revise their LOI, it'll be on the next agenda, and then you have a, you can discuss the both developers and which way you want to proceed, and go from there. Does that sound like a plan?
And, and, and.
And.
As part of that, do you want to keep that property in public ownership?
I, you're not coming across very clear, I don't.
Who wants to have?
You have, you have options.
Oh, yeah, I, you know, you have two options, find a developer, keep it as a public parcel and keep it on here, you know, as a not taxpay entity. I mean, you know, you have that opportunity to make it a park, you could make it a wellfield, you can make it a high-end RV park, you could make it into whatever is being imposed from the other developer.
Let me ask you a question. This is a luxurious opportunity for us right now. This is a non-binding means nothing vote. How many of you are willing to pay higher fees for the coming years to keep it exactly the way it sits today? Okay. How many of you are willing to pay less high fee and have the infrastructure supported more and have a new neighbor back there?
With Drew Dillard.
With, of course, with Drew Dillard, I can tell you. Okay.
The landslide. Who cares? It was not.
Okay, right, non-binding, non-binding. You know, somebody was talking about, turning into a pandemic there, and you're also concerned about security and people running around. Why have, why have they changed security on 48 acres back here for $30, bike paths and all that kind of stuff? You know, it's the same that kind of track now. But you're. The same kind of track, that, that more transient clientele back there. I'm going to set that up for the guy. You have people. Okay. Okay, Eric, any other questions?
Guys, can we have one meeting here, please? Thank you.
You can do anything wrong, we own the land, not the county, we, you own the land.
You do own the land.
He said, no. No, you're a public entity, you're like a city, and, you know, the, you know, that is the problem.
So then, who's going to monitor it?
Yeah, same one to monitor it now.
Additional homes being built?
No, I'm talking about if, if Ray, Ray says he'd like to leave it and have a park.
What's going to hire somebody?
I'm looking at the future, somebody who's talking about security and, and safety issues, if you have 48 acres back there that's unmonitored, what is going to develop back there?
It's going to be the same people that monitor it now.
It's going to be just like the old hotel.
Yeah.
Only it's not going to be a building.
Yeah, they don't get a fire.
It might be a building, but it's going to have the airplanes and, you know, model airplanes, you know, big, big guys. Anything else? If the board got everything they wanted, they got a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming.